Good morning, everyone. Good morning. We have a pretty full hour, so we thought we'd start. This says 9:59, but I think it's slow. Welcome. It's so good to see all of you. I hope today will turn out to be an important day in our time together at Belmont. We've been working together for a long time to bring ourselves to this day. So whether you're here in the Massey Performing Arts Center right now watching this live, or if you're watching the live on-stream, the on-stream live, or if you watch the video later, I just wanted to say to everyone who took a part in Vision 2020, thank you for investing your time in helping us to discover the future of Belmont. As the animation on the screen behind me was showing, this has been an extensive, inclusive, and collaborative process. In fact, more than one person has come up to me recently and asked, "When will we be done with this visioning thing?" I'm ready to move ahead with some action, and that's the point of today. But going back, in order to determine what we wanted Belmont to become, we all had to be involved, we all had to contribute, we all had to share our vision, and most importantly, we had to give our time, our energy, and our focus and our attention to this process. And now, more than a year later, we've done that together. From the focus groups, the resulting word clouds, the multiple sessions where people came together, including the leadership of the Student Government Association, the Staff Advisory Council, the Faculty Senate, sessions that included 52 leaders from across Belmont, sessions that included both trustees and students and faculty and staff and alumni, we've now come to the point where we've tried to consolidate as many of these ideas as we could into seven strategic priorities that represent our strategic intent to be a global leader. And since these priorities are a reflection of your thinking, we thought the best place to unveil them would be in a session like this on campus with you here today. So as you watch and as you listen, I encourage you to look for your own fingerprints on this strategic plan, because I promise you, they're there. And before I go much further, I would say there's some really important fingerprints on today's presentation and putting it together. And I would especially thank April Heffner and Logan Bishop, Suzanne Clements, John Carney and Paula Gill, and of course Paula's been involved throughout this process in so many ways. So thank you for your help in putting this together today. So many years ago, when I was teaching Strategic Management, I came across a Harvard Business Review article that made a huge impression on me. Many years later, it still impresses me. It contains the quote you see on the screen. Companies, and I was just substitute, universities or organizations that have risen to global leadership over the past years invariably began with ambitions that were out of all proportion to their resources and capabilities. Think about that. They were unrealistic, but they created an obsession with winning at all levels of the organization, and they sustained that obsession in a 10- to 20-year quest for global leadership. We call this obsession strategic intent. And strategic intent is really all about resolve, it's about stamina, it's about inventiveness, it's about resourcefulness, it's about leveraging resources, taking what we have and leveraging it. It's about the future, and yes, it's that word we don't like to say often, it seems, and I don't know why, but in the academic world, but it's about ambition. And so now we come to an ambitious moment, a vision moment, where we're looking and remembering that vision is a picture of a future that is so much more desirable than the present, that it creates a sense of urgency, it compels people to act, to ambitious action. And our Vision 2020 is built on seven key strategies. The first strategy being, of course, the core strategy.
If you ask us why we're here at Belmont, we would tell you it's because of the students. That's reflected in the first strategy point for Vision 2020. We're committed not only to excellence in teaching, but also to forging connections with students beyond the classroom. That means advising, it means student organization involvement, it means collaborative research and industry partnerships. Vision 2020 puts a priority on connecting with students. That's an approach to higher education I want to be a part of in the future.
The goal of Vision 2020 is for students to become the center of all that we do. At the end of the day, it's the student experience and commitment to community that makes Belmont such a special place to be. As we continue to define ourselves and our dreams for this university, it is my hope that Belmont will place a greater focus on including students in the development and execution of our long-term goals, and capitalize on the creativity, passion, and commitment of its students to make Belmont a place we're all proud to call home.
I'm graduating in December, and I've received a great education at Belmont. But throughout my time here, the classes that have meant the most to me are the ones that have challenged me to do my best. I know many current prospective students will be glad to know that with Vision 2020, Belmont's going to help us reach our full potential by promoting consistently high academic standards across all courses.
And as you'll see when we leave today, you'll be handed a brochure that outlines numerous other examples of how this strategy can be put into action, how we can all find ways to link into this strategy. The second initiative is related to the respect that we would have for one another moving forward. We view individual worth and value as the cornerstone of our faith-inspired imperative in defining our relationships in our community, our Belmont community. We will pursue transparency, open conversations, positive relationships as tools for creating a renewed sense of mutual respect and collaboration throughout the community. Frankly, this is an area where I wish there were do-overs, or I wish there was just a reset button, where we could just try again and clear the slate. But there really aren't in the real world, those don't exist. So we're just going to have to do some really hard work, and especially in the areas of mutual respect and collaboration. Additionally, we can respond to this challenge by encouraging even greater diversity in our Belmont community and showing that we value people by investing in their future, investing in their growth and their development.
It has been a pleasure and an honor to be part of the Welcome Home Team Diversity Task Force. And even though our work is far from over, we look forward to being part of the goals of Vision 2020, which challenge every member of our campus to make Belmont a more hospitable and welcoming environment.
I am incredibly proud and very grateful to Belmont University for our pledge to help support personal development plans for each of our faculty and staff. You know, we each bring God-given talents, unique God-given talents, to each of our jobs, and helping us with these personal development plans will support each of us personally, but even more so will help us support each other and certainly do a better job for our students.
Strategy number three. We will ensure long-term organizational strength by the efficient and responsible use of our resources. We've built greater capacity on this campus for holding classes and for learning, for food, soon for food services, for residence halls, and even for parking. But moving forward, we can be much more effective if we utilize these resources more fully. So this is, you know, the question from the very beginning, I guess, as we began talking about Vision 2020. What's the number? What's the number? That's not the number. Let me just say it. Somebody said that, by the way, and there was a caveat to that. That's not the number either. That's unlucky. And that's the number that the deans came up with when you totaled up all their input and said, and they said, "We'll be this big by 2020." And I guess what amazes me, for the first time, I'm the guy who said, "Whoa, slow down. Maybe let's don't go quite that fast." Is that crazy? But, I mean, in order to get to any number, we're going to have to keep our foot on the accelerator and keep it forward. But the number that eventually came out was... That one. And I have to say, it was around 8850, so give me some credit for pushing it a little higher. And I also wanted a number that I could remember. And I can remember that. So we were sitting around as a senior leadership team trying to decide on this, and I threw out that number, and somebody said, "We probably ought to check that number and make sure it's like 8888, it's not the sign of the devil's sister," or something like that, you know? So we checked it, and it turns out it's not. In fact, we found this. It was on a train. And that's a train that, back in Ohio a couple of years ago, got loose on its own. There was nobody aboard. And this guy has just jumped on the front to stop the train, but it went miles across and was headed for disaster and became the subject of a Denzel Washington film, Unstoppable. And when I heard that, it was just, "That's it." You know? That's a good number, 8888. There was another train that came up behind it and stopped it, coupled, and put the brakes on and slowed it down, but we don't want that number, we don't want to do that. But so that's a number that we can shoot for. That's 317 students a year increase. That's significant. That's 4.3 or 4% per year over that time period. We've exceeded that for years here, but it's still going to be a challenge to keep growing at that rate. So we'll need everybody working together and helping, and we'll need not only to have, to use our resources to recruit new students, but also, under this initiative, there's more than enrollment. There's information about trying to make Belmont a more sustainable campus, information about trying to, and ideas about how we can work together more effectively. And so let's look at a couple of those.
Over the last decade-plus, we are all familiar with the tremendous enrollment growth here at Belmont. It has indeed taken a team of faculty, staff, current students and alumni, as well as all of us in enrollment services, to reach these milestones. But we're not done. I look forward to working with this entire campus and our supporters around the world as we attract bright, talented, and wonderful students who will benefit from all that Belmont has to offer socially, academically, and spiritually.
Right now, we're using about 13 and 1/2 kilowatts per square yard of campus, which is a pretty good number. Can we do better? I'm confident that we can. By continuing to utilize our smart building technologies such as geothermal, computer monitoring of our HVAC and building lighting systems, LED lighting, and green roofs where we are right now, we will continue to have an impact on our power consumption, making Belmont a more sustainable campus and a good partner with our community.
Strategy four. We will engage in an ongoing evaluation of our processes of learning and adapt to changing environments. The phrases and concepts of cross-disciplinary interconnectedness, integration, system thinking, whatever you want to call it, how things connect to one another, will help to drive both our learning and our administrative mindset. For example...
Belmont's General Education BelCor is a dynamic, innovative, well-respected program that I truly believe gives our students practice in and inspiration for lifelong learning. Yet, as an institution, we always strive to strengthen and deepen these learning experiences with our students. So that's why I'm pleased to see learning community courses and junior cornerstone seminars specifically mentioned in Vision 2020. These courses are key elements of a Belmont education that provide critical opportunities to help students practice the integration of knowledge. So I'm encouraged that our visioning process calls us to pay attention to our students' learning and commit to work together to make every aspect of the BelCor program as successful as possible.
One of the things we're really excited about here in the business school in terms of Vision 2020 is the piece that deals with interdisciplinary collaboration. We began to see many years ago that it was no longer good business in order for marketing people to work by themselves, or accounting or finance people to work by themselves. The new word of the day is teams. Business is more successful when people work in teams. Now what we're seeing is that's not even enough. And take healthcare as an example. In order for patients to get a high-quality care experience, the healthcare people and clinical people depend upon the business side to work well and vice versa. And so that's really been an overall theme that's been behind our new Healthcare MBA, and it's now going to be a central piece behind our joint FarmD MBA that will be launched this next year as well. We really do think that's going to result in better quality overall patient care, and it's going to make for a much more enjoyable experience on campus as well as we begin to work with our colleagues across all the different disciplines.
Strategy five. We will utilize technology related to information dissemination, learning and instructional delivery, and administrative practice for the benefit of our students. We need a new way of thinking. We need a new way over the bar in dealing with some of the issues around us. What's these two outstanding examples of faculty members who have participated in the Belmont Innovation Challenge, and now the benefits of their involvement are being delivered to our students?
I've been working on a visual histories and virtual spaces project as part of the Belmont Innovation Challenge, because in today's world, art and technology go hand-in-hand. I want to use modern methods to show our students that they too can be producers of content. This is an exciting time to be at Belmont, and I'm excited to see what we can come up with as we embrace Vision 2020's charge to utilize technology for the benefit of our students' education.
Through Vision 2020, the university is strengthening its commitment to the digital age, including a forthcoming mobile app. Faculty experimenting with tools like Google Glass is just the beginning. From classrooms equipped with touch technology, video conferencing, and more, we will continue this commitment for connection, collaboration, and community.
I love how she hides it behind her hair. That's pretty incredible. Strategy number six. We will continue to be Nashville's university through aligning Belmont's vision and resources with the needs of people in our community. Listen to what Erin and Shawna have to say about this initiative.
Participating in service learning has been one of the keystone features of my college experience thus far. I've gotten to work with students at a nearby refugee high school, and through that, I've now become much more comfortable with myself and with the students, and it has quickly turned from a requirement to privilege. I'm excited to see that Vision 2020 places a priority on service learning programs, because I feel like it will greatly change perspectives on everyone and should be experienced by everyone.
Last spring, I was honored to participate in the "It's Brewing Time" in the community Volunteer Service Day, held at the high school where I graduated from, Hunter's Lane. This was a wonderful opportunity for me to be able to pay it forward and give back to the school that gave me a high school education. I feel very blessed to be a part of the Belmont University community. This institution places a strong emphasis on community service, and I'm excited to see this as a significant element of Vision 2020.
And I loved what we did with Brewing Time last year. The only complaint I heard was from people who were unable to participate because of their class responsibilities or other work responsibilities. So we're going to keep looking for ways to give multiple opportunities for people to be involved. And for Erin to say that serving has already gone from a requirement to a privilege, I mean, did you get that? It just doesn't get any better than that when you're seeking to help transform lives and show people, help them discover their purpose in life. Strategy number seven. Belmont's a Christian community of learning and service. As such, it's appropriate for us to provide increasing evidence of our Christian faith by seeking to respond to the imperative expressed in James 122, which states, "Do not merely listen to the word, but do what it says." I don't think there's any better place in the world to work than Belmont if you want to express your faith. You have that opportunity to put your Christian faith into action routinely, and we can do even more of some of these great things that we're doing today.
Taking our nursing students on mission trips, where they can both practice their skills and visually see their impact on our world, has been an amazing experience and one that I treasure. It's also one of the many reasons I love working at Belmont, where our Christian mission isn't just a bunch of words, but it's tangible action. I'm pleased that these trips are going to be more of a priority across campus in the future.
By participating in the Kiva Initiative, I was able to see how such a small amount of money can have such a drastic impact on others, and it gave me the ability to be a part of something bigger than myself. I have a passion for serving others and giving back, and through Kiva, Belmont offered me the perfect opportunity to continually serve those in the world around me. But not only are these values important to me, they're also central to Belmont's Christian identity, and I'm excited to see how Belmont will expand these projects as a part of our Vision 2020 goals.
So these are the seven initiatives. These are what we'll build on, and when you leave, you will be handed, again, a pamphlet or brochure that will list a lot more of the examples of what we're trying to give as examples of how we might put this into action. So as we seek to wrap this up, I want to have a chance just to make a couple more points. And what's interesting and important for all of us to observe about the questions that were just asked, I think they were most all about our students and about their experience on our campus and what we can do to continue to improve that. And, you know, always, when I respond to those questions, I always wish that you didn't even have to ask those questions. I wish there were ways that we'd already addressed every issue that's in your, possible in your mind, but I know that's not realistic. So that means we've got a lot, lot to do. We've got more work to do. And really, that means answering this question. What's it going to take to answer every question more satisfactorily than I'm able to answer them today? What's it going to take? And I think it's going to take something different than this. When you look at this arrow, just assume the large arrow is going, it's the desired direction of the university, and the smaller arrows represent the individual efforts of the team members of the whole university. Let's even assume with this arrow that everyone is working diligently with their best intentions. They want it, they want it to work. Nobody's trying to sabotage anything. There's all goodwill, and everybody's doing the best they can. But still, that university is going nowhere. Now consider the power of aligning our efforts and pulling in the same direction. Now, I'm not, even I am not naive enough to expect, nor do I even want us to look like that. But if we could more effectively align, come closer to that, consider the power behind that. Consider that if we all figure out what we can do together and head in that direction and cooperate and try to plug in where there are places to plug in for success at the Because I think we need to do that. I think our hardest work is ahead of us. Consider this graph, and I just made this up, but I think it's true. I think the physicists out there might even see something here. But as you improve quality, I think, as you start, some of it, it's kind of, you can improve quality with a little extra effort, but at some point, the curve turns up. And as you approach perfection out there, it gets harder and harder. It gets tougher and tougher. It's like a bigger and bigger mountain. I think we've moved along this at a pretty steady pace, but oops, oops, oops. At a pretty steady pace, but now we've come to a mountain that we need to climb. I want to close with a personal story, and I hope it doesn't gag you too much. But this looks like a nice mountain, but I discovered it's really not. And it's sure not a good place if you want to begin your mountaineering career. At 14,441 feet in elevation, it's not the tallest mountain in the U.S., but it's one of the, has, the continental U.S., but it is the one with the greatest rise in elevation, almost 9,000 feet from the base to the summit. A few years back, my son, one of my daughters and I said, "Let's go climb that mountain." So we trained at sea level, which makes, makes a difference, not in a bad way. We flew to Seattle, spent two days training and attending mountaineering school, and we took off for the summit with a guide and seven other people hooked into the rope with us at 9:00 one morning. We began our trip... Good, grateful. I didn't, I promised, I cannot, I cannot push that middle button. We began our trip down here, and we spent the first night about there. And it seemed okay, you know? We trudged along, stopped at Camp Mer, ate some horrible food, rested for about five hours, and just before midnight, the guide said, "Let's go." You have to start early to get up there and down, you know, in the next day. But the up-close picture of the next day, it's not quite as, it doesn't have any flowers in it, I can just say that. And things got tough, really tough, and for me, a little scary, stepping over crevices and glaciers and narrow paths. But we trudged through the darkness, relying on our guide to know the way and to warn us of the crevices in the glacier. The wind blew relentlessly at 30 to 40 miles an hour, the temperature was in the teens. And the mountain had been steep enough, but when we reached 11,000 feet, the incline increased about 45 degrees as we traversed a rock outcropping known as Disappointment Cleaver. Very appropriately named. So they call that the Flats. So that's, and we made our way up to, right there, the high break. And when we got to the high break, that's the last break before the summit. And I'll always remember the incredible sunrise of the sun coming up over the top of the clouds that day. But we took a break, and I thought, "Okay, I'm really hurting, but I can do this." But the first clue of trouble came when I couldn't keep my Snicker bar in my mouth, while I was trying to get some energy. And then our guide bounced by, and she said, "How you doing, Bob?" And my slurred reply told the whole story. "I'm doing okay. I'm going to the top." And suddenly she stopped and showed the first sign of being a human since we'd left the base camp. She was tough. I mean, "Come on, Bob, pick it up. You're holding us up." No, it's the guy behind me. He wants to ski up the mountain. I'm pulling him, you know, on the rope, and gosh. She stopped and she said, "You don't sound okay, Bob. I think you're out of O. I think you need to start down." I argued determinedly, but pitifully, "I'm okay, I'm going to the top." And she said, "I don't think you're okay. You have altitude sickness, you need to go down. Look at who's hooked into this rope with you. Do you want to endanger them by going on with the chance that you might fall? And look, the easiest part is there, we're almost there." So I didn't go to the top that day. But I learned a lot from this experience, and I'm proud of what I was able to do. But my biggest takeaway is that I learned if you aspire to do something really hard and really tough, it does get harder and harder as you approach the goal. I'm so proud to be a part of what we've accomplished together here at Belmont. We're climbing higher and higher every year. I think we're at the high-break point. But if we're going to the top, it's going to take the best efforts of everybody, aligning them as much as you can find it in yourself to do, to pull together in the same direction... in the same direction. I hear there's nothing like the view from the top. Haven't been there, but I want to go there this time. We're so close to greatness. Let's get there together and become one of America's great universities. Let's go to the top. Thank you. So at this point in the presentation, let's take a timeout or a pause and just get questions and comments from the audience. And there are microphones around the room. If you have a comment or a question, I would love for you to make that comment or question. I have Judy standing by with a question in case nobody has one. But actually, I don't want her question. So comments or questions from the audience?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Dr. Fisher. Good morning, everyone.
Somebody point where?
Right here.
Okay, okay.
Just in relation to strategy one, I was wondering if maybe like a multicultural center would be something that Belmont could maybe start thinking about for students of different cultures or different ethnicities where they can come and maybe just have a place to learn more about their culture and more about their backgrounds, and just come together and have that for the school to also take part in as well.
Well, I appreciate that question. One of the things that you saw in the video was about our Welcome Home Team. Our Welcome Home Team is our driving force for creating diversity and creating a sense of inclusion and a place where we can make Belmont a more welcoming environment to everyone. And there are different approaches in organizations to achieving goals. There are ways in a lot of organizations, create centers of this, and this, and this, and this. And at Belmont, our response has been not to create centers, but to create teams of people who attack problems and seek to solve them. So, you know, the realistic, I mean, the honest question to that is, that's not a closed subject. It's something certainly that needs to continue to be considered. But if we can find a way to achieve the same goals that that center might achieve, maybe there is a place where people, we could create a place, a physical space where people can come together for the express purpose of expressing their cultural identity. But the real answer is work in progress. And I think you'll see on many of these initiatives, you'll see that there is an ongoing discussion. Another question? Or comment. Comments are welcome too.
Hey, Dr. Fisher.
Hey.
So my question is, as we are trying to grow the school to this number that you were saying of 8,888 students, the acceptance rates at Belmont are quite high right now, and I imagine they would increasingly get high. And that is going to reflect Belmont's credibility as a school, and, you know, for people trying to move on to master's degrees and graduate school, you know, that affects what that does there. So what is Belmont's opinion on that, and how is this acceptance rate going to be controlled so it doesn't hurt the students that are here while still allowing us to expand?
Okay. One of the things that's really important to understand about academic quality at universities is I don't believe acceptance rates are the goal. I think the goal of quality is when we look for students who performed well in high school, that have high GPAs, that have high ACTs. And what we've seen over the years, we've seen the average ACT going from somewhere in the 24s to the mid 26, 26.5. And we have, as we've grown like crazy, we continue to attract stronger and stronger students. Now, it's kind of flattened out the last couple of years, but maybe the last three or four years in the 26s. But what we see at Belmont is we get so many students who apply, who are qualified, that, and somehow there's a sense that Belmont, I have people call me saying, "I hope you'll help this person get into Belmont." Well, what's their ACT? Well, it's 25. And they're worried. And I said, "Well, you know, they ought to apply because 25 is a good score for us." And the other thing about Belmont, it's just, you know, my sense, I don't want it to be just all students who make 30s and 31s and 32s on the ACT. That's not the kind of community Belmont's ever been. We've got a couple trustees here today who are graduates of Belmont, and I won't put them on the spot with their ACTs, but I'm just so glad you guys graduated from Belmont when you did. But, you know, I think what'll be the story for Belmont's academic quality will be, I think it's best expressed, even though I'm not totally sold out to the rankings, but the US News rankings measures that in a lot of different ways. And acceptance rate is a very small percent of what they measure. What they measure much more is the quality of incoming students, the class size, and the resources that you devote to actually the classrooms. But I appreciate that question. By the way, our application rate just continued. We have doubled the applicants this year, Thomas, help me, than we did five years ago. I think that's right. So we're getting a lot more applications than even enrollments. So that's another question.
Hi, Dr. Fisher. So in strategy two, we talk about transparency. I'm just wondering, when are we going to be addressing the breakdown of the consolidated student fee?
Well, I think that's been addressed. I think our chief financial officer met with a group of students last year, is that correct, and went through how that fee gets used and applied, is that correct? So I'm not sure what the question, is there more to the question?
Yes. So how are the exact dollar values broken down on a student-by-student basis? Because that sort of information wasn't provided.
Well, I don't have that with me, but I'd be glad for someone to provide that to you. But that question is open. There are no secrets, right? So that's, anything else?
Hope that that information would be publicly accessible to all students, and so they can see how the money is spent in some sort of way.
Sure. I think it's been made publicly accessible. And I think you've got a lot of information yourself that you can make publicly accessible, and a pretty good record of that as well. So maybe you ought to do that. Next.
Good morning, Dr. Fisher. My name's Danny Kastarko. I'm the Panellanic president. And so after a very-
Where are you? I'm sorry.
Oh, right here.
Okay, okay.
But after a very successful recruitment this past year, our chapters averaged at 195 women, which is huge, and it's also wonderful. But as a result, our chapters are having great difficulty finding places to meet on campus that fit our sizes. And also, at these sizes, it takes away from the individual experience of each member. And so we had submitted a proposal to bring extension onto Belmont's campus and to add another sorority to our campus to keep up with the ever-growing numbers that we face. And because Panellanic has such a high successful rate with recruitment, our numbers match what you bring in each year for new students. And so this past summer, we were allowed to begin the extension process of stacking and voted to bring on Gamify Beta. And so I was just wondering, when can we actually expect to bring on this new sorority that we desperately need?
Yeah. You know, I'm not sure of that either. That is an issue I'm fully aware of. We certainly have, are seeking additional ways for you to bring your sororities together. The size of the sororities is not unusual at large universities. You go to some of the, example, SEC schools, you'll find over 200, 250 in some of those sororities. But the meeting size is an issue that we're continuing to try to find solutions to. And certainly, one of the solutions is to have meetings at different times. So, and I know you're already doing some of that. And I'd, again, have to defer to someone else to talk about the details of how we're addressing that and hope to address it in the future.
The increased enrollment, how will that affect class sizes? Will there be more students per class, or will we have more classes for students?
What you'll see, our current student teacher ratio is about 1 to 13. That's been maintained since the year 2000. It might have been a little lower then. But over the last eight or nine years, it's been about 1 to 13. And that's our goal, is to maintain that. That is written and stated in the strategic plan that you'll receive as you exit. So we will continue to hire additional faculty and tenure-track faculty, and we'll continue to hire staff as needed to meet those needs. I'm not sure how many new positions are being added this year, but over the last several years, it's been almost 200 new faculty positions added to Belmont. So we'll keep doing that. We want to get to the point that we're fully utilizing our classrooms and the efficiency of the space all over campus. But at the same time, we want to try to be, maintain that small-town and small-community feeling. So we'll be working hard to do that, and we'll be investing money in that. Last question.
I actually have two questions.
Which one do you want to ask?
Okay, well, I'm going to ask both.
Okay.
I'm trying to mix them together.
Hey, you know what? You know what? I like that. That way I get to choose which one to answer. Go.
All right.
I'm just joking.
Okay. I was going to ask, I know that you've already discussed the inclusion of races and as well as religions on Belmont, but I wanted to know if you had any sort of plans to include the LGBTQ community within Belmont, increasing it, or anything like that?
And the second question?
Oh, and the second question is, it's kind of a comment question, whether or not that there is a realization that historically, Black sororities and fraternities is something that can increase diversity, Black diversity within Belmont, because that is something that, especially within the Black community, can make or break going to a school.
Right. Thank you, and thanks. I'll answer first LGBT question. Certainly, Belmont is a place that I believe has always been welcoming and inclusive of that community. I think obviously, you know, the big elephant in the room is, a few years ago, there was a discussion about an event at Belmont that made folks understand that differently. But and I won't talk about that event because I promised not to, but I will tell you that what I said then, that in the time I've been at Belmont, there's never, that's never been an issue in hiring, firing, promotion. And certainly, it's always been a welcoming place to our students here. We are, I think, we changed, we wrote it down. It's in our policies. Our board approved it, that Belmont does not discriminate. But your question goes way beyond discrimination, and it's a feeling of inclusiveness and being involved in the Belmont community. And I understand that. And all I can say is that certainly, I support the Bridges program. I support what the students that are part of that organization are doing, and I support their leadership, and would welcome any initiatives that they have to recommend Belmont being a more welcoming place. In regard to what I call segregated sororities and fraternities, that may be the route we have to go, but that's not my dream for Belmont. My dream is a day when everybody's included in whatever we do. And I know that, you know, you look around, and that's still not reflected in our society. But maybe it's only fair that one traditionally African-American fraternity or sorority is included, and then is given the same challenge that I give to every sorority and every fraternity on this campus, and that's to include everyone who wants to be a part of your organization. And that's the Belmont way. That's been the way we defined our membership and fraternities and sororities all along. And so I appreciate both those questions, and I hope I partially at least answered them for you.